Please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Madam Clerk, please call and roll.
Councilmember Daze?
Here.
Councilmember Dunaway?
Present.
Councilmember Fitch?
Here.
Councilmember Gray?
Present.
Councilmember Clancy?
Here.
Councilmember Tracus?
Present.
Councilmember Harder?
Here.
Mr. Presiding Officer, we have a quorum.
Very well, is there a motion for approval of the Journal of the Meeting of December 10th, 2019? So moved, second. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Hearing none, the motion carries. The December 10th, 2019 Journal is approved. We have no bid openings this afternoon, so we'll move on to communications.
Mr. Presiding Officer, we have some tax compromises this evening, so we will move to zoning matters. Under zoning matters, item number one, 6th District.
Receive, file, and the matter be referred to the Committee on Public Improvements, and that will be the order.
Item number two, 6th District.
Receive and file, and that will be the order.
Item number three, 6th District.
Receive, file, and the county councilor will be directed to prepare the appropriate legislation, and that will be the order.
Moving on to road and bridge matters, item number one, 5th and 6th Districts.
Receive, file, plan specifications and detailed estimate of cost be approved, and the Director of Procurement be authorized to advertise for bids as recommended.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Hearing none, motion carries.
Moving on to other communications, item number one.
Receive, file, and the county councilor will be directed to prepare the appropriate legislation, and that will be the order.
Item number two.
Receive and file, and that will be the order.
Item number three, 2nd Districts.
Receive and file.
So ordered.
Item number four.
Receive, file, and the appropriation transfers in items number four through eight be approved as requested. Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Hearing none, motion carries.
Item number nine, 7th Districts.
Receive, file, and refer to the Department of Transportation and Public Works, the Department of Planning, and the County Counselor. So ordered.
Item number 10, 3rd Districts.
Receive, file, and the change of owner be approved as requested. Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Hearing none, motion carries.
Item number 11, 5th Districts.
Receive, file, and the county councilor will be directed to prepare the appropriate legislation.
So ordered.
Item number 12.
Receive, file, and the county councilor will be directed to prepare the appropriate legislation, same motion through item number 14, and that will be the order.
Item number 15.
Receive, file, and the issuance of a request proposal be approved as requested. Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Hearing none, motion carries.
Item number 16.
Receive, file, and the county councilor will be directed to prepare the appropriate legislation, same motion through item number 19, and that will be the order.
Item number 26, Districts.
Receive and file, and that will be the order.
Item number 21, 7th Districts.
Receive and file, so ordered. Please read the add-ons.
Under other communications, item number one, 6th Districts.
Receive, file, and the county councilor will be directed to prepare the appropriate legislation, and that will be the order.
Item number two, 7th Districts.
Receive, file, and refer to the county auditor. So ordered.
Item number three.
Receive and file, and that will be the order. Report to the County Executive.
Thank you, Ernie, and good afternoon, everyone. 2019 was a heck of a year. For most of you, it was your first year on the county council. For me, it was my first few months as county executive. And with this office comes an awesome responsibility, an opportunity to make government work for everyone, to tackle challenges left discarded, and to create a more open, transparent place to work, to do business, and to serve our residents. We have passed more than 300 pieces of legislation and appointed 90 people to our boards and commissions. We've leveraged bipartisan support to move our government forward, and thanks to each of you for your help. I have signed nine executive orders focusing on our Justice Center, fair wages for women and racial minorities, and prevailing wage. Earlier today, the Civil Service Commission approved my request to provide paid family leave for all county employees. My staff and I are working on an annual report, a requirement by charter that will put into detail all the great work we have accomplished in less than eight months. I look forward to sharing that report with the council and with the public early next year. 2019 made it clear that St. Louis County government had a lot of challenges. For five years, there was nobody minding the store in the executive branch of government, no leadership, no accountability, and you can't leave the executive branch unattended and not expect any consequences. And while I'm proud of the work we have done so far, we have a lot to do in 2020. Earlier this year, I refused to sign off on a proposal by HUD to demolish all of the public housing in Wellston. With this pause, we have reached an agreement with the federal government to make sure that everyone in Wellston who wants to stay there will have a place to stay. But the process to create safe, affordable, quality public housing has a lot left to go. It's a commitment we've made and that we'll continue to make into next year. My predecessor left messages that anyone really greater than any of us could have imagined. While justice was doled out by the courts, we worked to restore trust in county government, and we'll continue with that as our priority. But making change isn't always easy. It's not always headline grabbing, like the breathless coverage of the Loop Trolley or the name change of a street from the name of a former NFL team. But simply put, good government decisions should not be made on what possible financial gain could come from them. What we do, day in and day out, may not be clickbait, but I'm okay with that. For the first time ever, taxpayers in St. Louis County have a simple document that shows how our budget is constructed, where revenues are, and what various taxes are collected, and what they're being used to accomplish. Showing what happens with our money to our residents and what they pay for taxes is a new baseline of transparency. Every county government department, under my direction, is to conduct their business in full public view as much as possible, and we have a new county counselor, a former federal prosecutor, to make sure that that happens. We've heard criticisms from some who appear at our meetings that nothing has changed. I push back strongly with those comments. They simply aren't true. Change isn't always sexy. It's seldom at a breakneck pace. It's not always something reporters care about covering, but change is happening, and in fundamental ways that will change government in St. Louis County for years to come. The bad actions of one person have deeply damaged our government and placed doubt about our abilities to run government effectively. All of us on the dais have our work cut out for us, but I appreciate the efforts that are already underway. 2019 spotlighted St. Louis County not always in ways that would make us proud. A pay-to-play scheme by my predecessor was followed later by a stunning jury award for one of our St. Louis County police officers. In 2020, we will continue working to improve our police department, and I've said before, change begins at the top. I've appointed four new police commissioners, and they will meet as a new body on Thursday of this week. At that meeting, Keith Wildtaber will be officially recognized as a lieutenant and will lead the department's new diversity and inclusion unit. The Wildtaber case has brought this county much embarrassment, a case that never should have been argued the way it was and put us in a national spotlight as a place where it's okay to discriminate because the law allows that in Missouri. That's not okay in any way, shape, or form. The former administration should have not let this case go to trial in going the settlement offer that was on the table, but they did, and now the taxpayers have to pay the price. This week mediation begins between Keith's attorneys and our county counselors to resolve this case. I hope this case moves forward quickly so Keith can get what he is due, and the county can focus on making lasting change in the police department to ensure that all officers are treated fairly, no matter who they are. It's an honor to serve as your county executive. We'll get through this dark storm that Stinger caused, both with his aggressive transactional behavior that sent him to federal prison, but also with his apathy, which led to the Wildtaber case going to trial. I did not have a big enough moth when I took office, but the mess is getting cleaned up. The day-to-day good government in the county is the new normal, and pay-to-play is dead. I will continue working to ensure that St. Louis County is the economic engine of our state and that the status quo is no longer the default position, and more diverse voices have a seat at the table when all of our complex and serious decisions are made. Thank you, Ernie, and Happy New Year to everyone.
Thank you, Sam. Report to special committees. The committee will continue to hold on the order of business, and that will be the order. That brings us to public forum. This afternoon, we have nine speakers. When you're called, please come forward to the podium by yourself, state your name and address for the record. You'll be given three minutes to make your presentation. I will give you a 30-second warning when you're within 30 seconds of your three minutes, and I will just remind everyone to continue the decorum that we've been able to establish the last several weeks, respectfully allowing each speaker to make their presentation without interruption, comment, or remark from the gallery. To do so is out of order, and you'll be warned once if you do it, and the second time, you will ask to be removed. But hopefully that won't happen. So with that, Madam Clerk, go ahead and call the first speaker.
First speaker, Azora Leggins.
Good afternoon, Ms. Leggins.
Good afternoon. Good evening, Executive Page and the entire county council. Since 2015, I have come here not for the same reasons, but always seeking the same rights, equal protection and due process. Most of my community could help themselves if only basic rights were afforded. This year, our government had a new face. Executive Page replaced Executive Stinger. Chairman Tracus replaced Chairman Page. County Counselor O'Reilly replaced County Counselor Crane. Prosecuting Attorney Bell replaced Attorney McCullough. I look back, and I am deeply saddened when I see nothing has changed, and no real plans for change are being considered. The tragic death of Michael Brown was a real eye-opener for our region regarding the race inequality and the race inequity, but still citizens come to this meeting week after week requesting and demanding change in these areas. This governing body's first obligation to the people is to defend the Constitution. Dr. Page has misled me and others into thinking he would bring transparency, accountability, and uphold the laws and the Constitution regardless of who the offenders are. It appears to me that the Boeing Company is not on his list of those to hold in compliance. 24 years ago, I was approved for total disability from my employer, McDonald Douglas, now known as the Boeing Company. I have been re-approved ever since. Evidence shows that I have never received benefits as called out in the policies. 2017, I discovered my benefits were being stolen. When I informed Boeing, Boeing filed a temporary restraining order, which resulted in a permanent injunction to silence me. I reported Boeing's criminal activity to the prosecuting attorney's office. The executive assistant to Bob McCullough, Edward McGee, took the information, investigated, and rendered a negative decision without the authority to do so. To date, due process has never been had, and the prosecuting attorney's office has failed to look into the theft of my benefits. Stealing over $25,000 is a felony in Missouri. Chairman Tracus suggested if I was denied due process, I should get a lawyer. Unable to retain an attorney, I filed the action myself.
30 seconds, Ms. Leggins.
County Counselor Crane offered, County Counselor Crane's office would sign on to defend McGee in the matter of Leggins versus McGee. I have asked then Attorney Crane and now Attorney O'Reilly what authority allows their office to represent McGee at the taxpayer's expense. I have received no response. Attorney O'Reilly's actions mimic the actions of Attorney General Smith, called out in this week's American, where the attorney general is defending and supporting the status quo while denying an innocent man, Lamar Johnson, a fair trial. Ms. O'Reilly is defending the status quo that would rather see me and my family suffer than ensure I receive a fair and due process as well as equal protection.
Please, I have to ask you to wrap up, please.
Guaranteed. This problem should be corrected, not litigated.
Thank you, Ms.
Next speaker, Tracy Rumpf.
Good afternoon, Ms. Rumpf.
Good afternoon. I've been here once before speaking, and you all may recognize my name. I sent you all an email yesterday. I got one response. That's pretty typical. This is the face of human negligence at the hands of St. Louis County Animal Care and Control. I know you all are sick of us. I think you think we're extremists. We're not. We just care. This dog's name is Zion. This dog, volunteers offered to pay for her easy-to-mediate cherry eye. County declined, and instead of giving her a chance of adoption, chose to warehouse this friendly young dog in the back room for months, where walks are infrequent and potty breaks typically happen in kennels. A rescue tagged Zion. The bottom of these photos are taken the day that county released her to the rescue for transport. Her white fur was urine stained. She reeked of excrement. Her nails were untrimmed. Her right brown eye was no longer visible. The rescue immediately sought the help of a specialist who determined that Zion's right eye was severely infected and that she was in excruciating pain. Zion's right eye was removed. How many more Zions are suffering in county's back room? How many? I'm gonna guess that you all have a heart, that you all can feel. You don't act like it. I can honestly tell you, county executive, I don't give a rat's whatever that the NFL street sign was changed. I don't care that it's Ram's Way. I don't care. What I care about is that you are doing nothing, nothing. At least it doesn't look like it. I mean, tell us. Tell us if you're doing... Mandy Ryan started yesterday. I've talked to her four times. I stood up here, I sent you all emails. I run a foundation called the Wet Nose Project. We support all the small rescues here in St. Louis. I've reached out to other states and cities where they work together with animal control. Stray Rescue now runs the animal control in the city. It's now no-kill. How did they figure that out? They communicated, they talked. You all sit in front of us and don't look at us. You don't listen to us. You work for us. Am I wrong? You work for us. We have been sitting here for over a year, begging you to do something. How can you sit there?
30 seconds, Ms. Rumpf.
How can you sit there and not do anything? I run a company. If my employees didn't work and do their job, I'd fire their asses. What are you doing? Changing a street name from Ram's Way to whatever? Who cares? I know dog care. This is not sexy for you. This isn't gonna get you big headlines or whatever. And I'm amazed, county executive, in your little opening...
Write your comments to the chair, ma'am.
To the chair, to Mr. County Executive. In your opening statement, you didn't mention anything about the animal care control, which is a complete nightmare in everything that happened in 2019.
Time is up, Ms. Rumpf. I have to ask you to wrap up.
Please do something.
Thank you.
Next speaker, Ed Golderman.
Good afternoon, Mr. Golderman.
Good afternoon, sir. My name is Ed Golderman. I live in Kirkwood 542, Woodell Court. And whether I'm here at these meetings or I've watched the, and it's a great service to stream your meetings, it's really a great service. It's a giant leap. Every speaker that comes up, instead of what they're saying, should just say, "Stop sending $200 million a year into the city of St. Louis." And if 30 and 40 speakers just stood up and said that, and you had the courage of a small group aboard in Jefferson City who today stopped the juggernaut of state funding for another downtown sports empire, that's all you have to do. Start with the zoo museums. $60 million a year returned to your taxpayers are spent in St. Louis County, and there's the tax money for the raises, and there's the tax money to staff the places that take care of animals, and there's the money to deal with all the other inequities. So, as I did the first time I came back eight, nine, 10 months ago, I just suggested, please end the five zoo museum district taxes. They don't need it. You can go after that money and win it. Eliminate this city-county-give-out-money-every-day board and commission, and take a look at what you're spending downtown. Are you getting any return for what you're spending downtown? It's a matter of money. Thank you, sir.
Thank you, Mr. Goldman.
Next speaker, Gretchen Woodell Barwick.
Good afternoon, Ms. Woodell Barwick.
Good afternoon. My name is Gretchen Woodell Barwick, and I'm with the Missouri Sierra Club, and I am just here today to thank you all for coming together with environmentalists, with energy builders, with home builders, coming together in the county to come to a compromise on energy efficiency in building codes. Today, you all will hopefully be voting on Bill Number 363, Substitute One. That is a compromised energy code, which will be 15% more energy efficient than what we have currently in St. Louis County. It will save the average new homeowner $250 per year on utility costs. It will significantly improve indoor air quality, which is linked to better asthma outcomes, and poor indoor air quality is linked to things like cancer, learning disabilities, even Alzheimer's and Parkinson's disease. So I just came here to thank you all today. I look forward to working with many of you in the future to continue to improve things in St. Louis County.
Thank you, Ms. Woodell Barwick.
Next speaker, Tom Sullivan.
Good afternoon, Mr. Sullivan.
Mr. Presiding Officer, I have a few things to mention. The situation with the proposed bailout of the Loop Trolley by Metro only gets more bizarre. It makes me wonder if Talby Roach was the right person for by-state CEO. It's beginning to look like he is not. It would be nice to think the council gave the 2020 budget the scrutiny it deserves, but that isn't the case. In particular, it seems the county executive's office keeps growing. It's now adding a photographer for a new position, multimedia coordinator at $75,000 a year. The Affordable Housing Trust Fund is up for final approval. It will accomplish little as it is. I think the housing issue as a whole needs to be looked at from a broader perspective. Time Magazine announced its Person of the Year last week. I also have some 2019 awards related to St. Louis County government, Best People of the Year and Worst People. It's a three-way tie for Best People of the Year. One awardee is Michael Burton and its Howard T supporters. Their persistence and concern for their community ended in a good outcome against long odds, despite no help from the county. Also tied for the Best People Award is another persistent group, the Animal Shelter Volunteers, who are here every week seeking to have their four-legged friends at the county animal shelter treated better. Their commitment should be applauded. The third group tied for Best People of 2019 are those county employees who have been screwed over with little or no pay increases, but continue to do their jobs keeping county government running. Then there is the 2019 St. Louis County Government Worst People Award, and it's another three-way tie. One awardee is easy to figure, Steve Stinger. No need to elaborate. Second worst award goes to Sam Page, who has proven a big disappointment as county executive. A Post-Dispatch editorial pointed out the obvious. Mr. Page had a golden opportunity, but isn't providing much leadership. The tie for Worst People of the Year, the third tie, third group is for Worst People of the Year, are those four council members who voted to give $240 million for the expansion of the convention center. This includes then-councilman Sam Page, then-councilwoman Hazel Irby, and councilwoman Lisa Clancy and Rochelle Walton Gray. Revenue could have and should have gone to build up St. Louis County rather than support the boondoggle expansion. All four made it clear they don't care about their community. Thank you, Mr. Tracus.
Thank you, Mr. Sullivan.
Next speaker, Arne Deenhoff.
Good afternoon, Mr. Tracus, members of the county council. My name is Arne C. A.C. Deenhoff, state and county public advocate. Thank you, Mr. Fitch, for finally showing me some respect and being ethical and sitting through my three minutes.
It's Christmas.
I think it's, I'm sorry?
It's Christmas.
At least you have a heart. And thank you, Chief Belmar, for finally attending the county council meetings. I appreciate it that you listen and care about the citizens of St. Louis County. Now, the sign right here has been in my yard for over three years, and it says, "We support the police." I truly believe in our police officers, 110%, and would take my shirt off for them. However, it's been a tough year for the police department. I will not condone or allow bad apples or bad actors in the police department to violate anyone's civil rights or violate any general orders or protocol of the police department. But this is what a sign looks like, being in somebody's yard after three years weathered, and so I do support the police. In the Keith Wildtaber verdict, Sam Page, you talk about change. You changed your stance three weeks into it, and you have a different now, a different base of hiring $150,000 law firm to enforce the Missouri State Constitution, and you're talking out of both sides of your mouth. So on one side, you want inclusion and you want diversity, but on the other side, you don't want to pay a lawsuit, and that's kind of concerning. You talk about change and accountability. I have seen none from you. In terms of Mark Tucker, when is Mark Tucker, the county fraudger, going to produce one audit? You pay this gentleman over $80,000, and he has an assistant and a part-timer, and he hasn't done anything. He hasn't stopped any county fraud. He hasn't investigated any wrongdoing, any spending. He hasn't uncovered any corruption of Steve Stanger or others, misspending waste and influences on county contracts. Rather, he's a friend of Sam Page's, and he continues to be on the payroll. You're gonna pass a budget. I ask you to strip his budget down to $1 and send a clear message. Now, Ernie Tracus, your investigation has cost taxpayers $75,000 in attorney's fees, and they never met with the complainant. I'm asking you that the county admonish and censor you, Mr. Tracus, chairman of the Ethics Commission.
30 seconds, Mr. Deenhoff.
You treat employees with disrespect, and they are not important. You don't want to give the employees a pay raise. Use harsh words, derogatory statements, belittle others, use bad language and offensive gestures that you countless pound us for saying when we haven't said it, all while you're being an attorney and obstructing and violating the Supreme Court rules of the Attorney Oath of Ethics. I also ask that this county council say no to the 16 police officers in Metro...
Time is up, Mr. Deenhoff. You need to conclude your remarks.
...to the metro in the appropriation of $1.5 million, and finally ask that you support the police and finally pass the Police Association collective bargaining agreement. They deserve to have some sense of accuracy and accountability going into the new year.
Time is up, Mr. Deenhoff.
And I appreciate you passing that. Thank you.
Next speaker, Kira Braxton.
Good afternoon, Ms. Braxton.
First, let me start by saying thank you to Councilmen Tracus, Finch, and Harder for voting no concerning Anthony, aka Tony Weaver, coming over to Justice Services as an appointee for an absolute made-up job, jumping his pay from $45,000 per year as Ms. Walden Gray's secretary to a whopping $85,000 per year. I'm disappointed that the county executive actions are not matching his words at all. I submitted this packet of verifiable pay-to-play schemes to the county executive himself and his office in May of this year that point directly at Steve Stinger and those that he has put in places or needed to keep his corrupt agenda going that are still here in county government. This packet pointed to Councilwoman Walden Gray, with Stinger being involved in a pay-to-play scheme with the Jamestown Mall deal, with her father and Anthony, aka Tony Weaver, lurking and pulling her strings. Thank God, North Point Development pulled out due to the corruptness involved. Also, Ed Rhodey didn't get his $100,000 from North Point Development at all. However, the next day, Steve Stanger gave his brother Sean Rhodey a whopping $18,500 in special pay increase the next day. Then there's the BJA federal grant that you investigated and has all but been abandoned by both corrupt... and has all but been abandoned by both corrupt pay-to-play contractors, no notice given. You treated these facts as an annoying fly. These are some of the reasons that you have a huge issue with 4,200 employees. Again, there's no money for us, but more than enough for all of your appointees. This is politics in true form, smiling in employees' faces while stepping on and stealing from them every step of the way. St. Louis County government leadership has a horrible spending problem. And yes, it is on the backs of the employees. Sam, your actions, quite frankly, are saying this is a Stinger... Steve Stinger spin-off government, Part II. Rumor has it Sean Rhodey is out at the end of this month. Try and make it happen by December 28th, so he won't earn one red cent of St. Louis County retirement of an annual $8,400 paid by the taxpayers every year when he reaches retirement. You talked about discarded issues and challenges. A discarded challenge is not being talked about by you nor corrected nor any future plans to correct. Is that 4,200 employees' wage freeze of 12 years ongoing? It has to stop.
Thank you, Ms. Braxton.
Next speaker, Gary Newcomer.
Good afternoon, Ms. Newcomer.
Good afternoon. Thank you for being here today. My name is Gary Newcomer. I'm with the Community Builders Network of Metro-St. Louis. We're a coalition of organizations working in community development, both in St. Louis City and St. Louis County, as well as a few in the Metro East. I'm here today to talk about the Affordable Housing Trust Fund. Our members have identified affordable housing as a growing need in St. Louis County. They've also noticed that state and federal resources have been shrinking for a couple of decades now, especially over the last 10 to 15 years. And we've gotten together and identified Affordable Housing Trust Funds as a possible solution to that. So we're excited to see that as a conversation happening in St. Louis County. We've seen it as a local and flexible use of dollars to address needs that are happening in St. Louis County, identified by folks in St. Louis County rather than the federal government. We've looked at the St. Louis... or the trust fund in the city of St. Louis and found that it raised $17 for every $1 invested, which is a pretty good return that we felt. And then finally, most importantly, it's the first step in really addressing a growing affordable housing need in St. Louis County. So that's all I've got today. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Newcomer.
Final speaker, Angie Zoric.
Good afternoon, Ms. Zoric.
Good afternoon, Angie Zoric, Oakville, Missouri. Well, um... I don't have anything bad to say about anybody up here. I think that it's been a rough year for everybody, and I appreciate that you guys have been here. I wish you would have done more for animal care... for the volunteers and animal care and control. And I was very surprised that you guys voted for shooting deer with arrows in our county parks. I think that's a mistake. But, um... No, we'll be back. We'll be back in January, and I'm sure the volunteers are going to be here in full force. So I think that you guys have come a long way. I know that everything didn't run smoothly and perfectly in exactly the way that every single person in this room or people who come here on a regular basis wanted it to. But I appreciate everything that you have done, and I hope that you all have a Merry Christmas and Happy Holidays. And that's it.
Same to you, Ms. Zoric, and thank you for your acknowledgement.
Thank you.
That concludes public forum. Please proceed with introduction of bills.
Bill Number 387, introduced by Councilmember Trakus and ordinance, authorizing the county executive to execute a contract with Woodruff Communications St. Louis LLC, DVA Paradowski Creative, to provide advertising, marketing, branding, and media services for the Department of Parks and Recreation. Bill Number 388, introduced by Councilmember Trakus and ordinance, appropriating $4,877,055 from the unappropriated balance of the Public Mass Transit Fund for support of county police services for by-state development agency. Mr. Presiding Officer, those are the bills.
Thank you. I'll proceed with perfection.
Bill Number 20, introduced by Councilmember Harder.
Please hold. Bill Number 20 is held.
Bill Number 330, introduced by Councilmember Clancy for Councilmember Dunaway. Please hold.
Bill Number 320, 330 is held.
Bill Number 374, introduced by Councilmember Trakus.
Move to perfect Bill Number 374. Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Hearing non-motion carries. Bill Number 374 is perfected.
Bill Number 375, introduced by Councilmember Trakus.
Move to perfect Bill Number 375. Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Hearing non-motion carries. Bill Number 375 is perfected.
Bill Number 376, introduced by Councilmember Trakus.
Move to perfect Bill Number 376. Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Bill Number 376 is perfected.
Bill Number 377, introduced by Councilmember Trakus.
Move to perfect Bill Number 377. Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Bill Number 377 is perfected.
Bill Number 378, introduced by Councilmember Trakus.
If I could for a moment, Bills Number 378, 383, and 384 on the agenda this evening were inaccurately placed under the perfection section of the agenda. All three of those bills were perfected last week. We will take them up for final passage in the... that portion of the agenda. So with that, Madam Clerk, please proceed with Bill Number 379.
Bill Number 379, introduced by Councilmember Clancy.
I move to perfect Bill Number 379.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Bill 379 is perfected.
Bill Number 380, introduced by Councilmember Trakus.
Move to perfect Bill Number 380. Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Bill Number 380 is perfected.
Bill Number 381, introduced by Councilmember Trakus.
Move to perfect Bill Number 381. Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Bill Number 381 is perfected.
Bill Number 382, introduced by Councilmember Trakus.
I move to perfect Bill Number 382. Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Bill Number 382 is perfected.
Bill Number 385, introduced by Councilmember Dunaway.
I'd like to hold Bill Number 385 for committee of the whole.
Very well. Bill Number 385 is held.
Bill Number 386, introduced by Councilmember Trakus.
I move to advance Bill Number 386 to final passage order of business. Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Hearing non-motion carries. Bill Number 386 is advanced to the final passage order of business, and we will take it up.
Excuse me, mister. Is I the officer?
I'm sorry. You're right. You're right.
We need to perfect this first.
That's right. So with that being the case, I move to... I move to perf... to perfect Bill Number 386. Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Hearing none. Bill 386 is perfected. Now, that being done, we will...
Move to advance.
Move to...
Advance it to final passage.
So for that, I need... okay, very well. I need a roll call.
Councilmember Days.
Aye.
Councilmember Dunaway.
Aye.
Councilmember Fitch.
Aye.
Councilmember Gray.
Aye.
Councilmember Clancy.
Aye.
Councilmember Trakus.
Aye.
Councilmember Harder.
Aye.
Mr. Presiding Officer, on the motion to advance Bill 386 to the final passage order of business, has seven ayes.
All right, very well. So, and we'll take that up in the final passage portion of the agenda. Thank you. Sorry for the confusion. I think that then takes us to final passage. 384. No, 384's already been... we've addressed that already. That's in final passage. It was listed under perfection as an error.
378?
370...
378, 383, and 384 will be taken up on final passage.
So we're through perfection.
They were already perfected last week.
Then 385 then. 385 is held.
We're now on final passage?
Yes, we're on final passage. Please proceed.
Substitute Bill Number Two for Bill Number 284, introduced by Councilmembers Clancy and Walton-Grey.
I move for final passage of Substitute Bill Number Two for Bill Number 284.
Second.
Roll call.
Councilmember Days.
Aye.
Councilmember Dunaway.
Aye.
Councilmember Fitch.
No.
Councilmember Gray.
Aye.
Councilmember Clancy.
Aye.
Councilmember Trakus.
No.
Councilmember Harder.
No.
Mr. Presiding Officer, on Substitute Bill Number One for Bill 284, there are four ayes and three noes.
Very well. Substitute Bill Number Two for Bill Number 284 is finally passed.
Bill Number 320, introduced by Councilmember Clancy.
Um, I am going to continue to hold this. I think we will be having a committee of the whole discussion after the first of the year.
Very well. Bill Number 320 is held.
Substitute Bill Number One for Bill Number 331, introduced by Councilmember Trakus. Mr. Presiding Officer, we have a substitute bill.
Please read the substitute bill.
Substitute Bill Number Two for Bill Number 331, introduced by Councilmember Trakus. An ordinance...
Go ahead.
Approving and adopting the budget for the General Fund for Fiscal Year 2020, appropriating and setting apart out of the unappropriated balance of the General Fund the sum of $316,696,542 to be placed to the credit of the respective departments, offices, boards, commissions, agencies, and funds of the St. Louis County Government as provided in the budget for fiscal year 2020 as amended by this ordinance.
Thank you. I move for adoption of Substitute Bill Number Two for Bill Number 331.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Hearing non-substitute, Bill Number Two for Bill Number 331 is adopted. I move now to take up Substitute Bill Number Two for Bill Number 331 on the final passage order of business.
Second.
Roll call.
Can I have a question?
Sure.
I don't have a copy of Substitute Bill Two. Did you get that?
Should have been in your packet.
I've got one.
Should have been in your legislation packet this morning.
What would have changed in that, do you know, off the top of your head?
This bill appropriates and encumbers escrows, funds designated and requested by the Circuit Court, or raises to certain employees. It's necessary to do that to perfect and protect the county's legal interest and right to litigate the court's request.
Thanks. Okay. So that'll add $1.5 million, is that correct?
That will add it and encumber it until a resolution is met... a resolution is reached with the Circuit Court or not. And if not, then we will file the appropriate legal action challenging the request.
Okay. Thank you.
And your vote?
Mr. Presiding Officer, am I taking the roll call on this?
You want to start it again? Go ahead.
Okay. Councilmember Days.
Aye.
Councilmember Dunaway.
Aye.
Councilmember Fitch.
Aye.
Councilmember Gray.
Aye.
Councilmember Clancy.
Aye.
Councilmember Trakus.
Aye.
Councilmember Harder.
Aye.
Mr. Presiding Officer, on the motion to take up Substitute Bill Number Two for Bill Number 331 on the final passage order of business, there are seven ayes.
Very well. Substitute Bill Number Two for Bill Number 331 is finally passed.
Okay, we need to take up... We need now... we now need to read the Substitute Bill Number Two for Bill Number 331, introduced by Councilman Trakus.
Proceed. Did we not just do this?
We adopted the sub, and I have finally passed the sub.
Oh, yeah, I know. Go ahead.
Okay, I need a second.
Second.
Thank you.
Want to roll the... want to... call the roll?
Councilmember Days.
Aye.
Councilmember Dunaway.
Aye.
Councilmember Fitch.
Aye.
Councilmember Gray.
Aye.
Councilmember Clancy.
Aye.
Councilmember Trakus.
Aye.
Councilmember Harder.
Aye.
Mr. Presiding Officer, on Substitute Bill Two for Bill 331, there are seven ayes.
So for the second time, we're going to move for final passage of Substitute Bill Number Two for Bill Number 331.
Second.
Is there a roll call?
Mr. Presiding Officer, that's what we just did.
Okay. So you're happy now?
We have finished with Substitute Bill Two.
Let's proceed.
Bill Number 348, introduced by Councilmember Trakus.
Move for final passage of Bill Number 348. Second. Roll call.
Councilmember Days.
Aye.
Councilmember Dunaway.
Aye.
Councilmember Fitch.
Aye.
Councilmember Gray.
Aye.
Councilmember Clancy.
Aye.
Councilmember Trakus.
Aye.
Councilmember Harder.
Aye.
Mr. Presiding Officer, on Bill 348, there are seven ayes.
Bill 348 is finally passed.
Bill Number 353, introduced by Councilmember Trakus.
Move for final passage of Bill Number 353. Second. Roll call.
Councilmember Days.
Aye.
Councilmember Dunaway.
Aye.
Councilmember Fitch.
Aye.
Councilmember Gray.
Aye.
Councilmember Clancy.
Aye.
Councilmember Trakus.
Aye.
Councilmember Harder.
Aye.
Mr. Presiding Officer, on Bill 353, there are seven ayes.
Bill Number 353 is finally passed.
Substitute Bill Number One for Bill Number 363, introduced by Councilmembers Dunaway and Harder.
I move for final passage of Substitute Bill Number One for Bill Number 363. Second.
Please call the roll.
Councilmember Days.
Aye.
Councilmember Dunaway.
Aye.
Councilmember Fitch.
Aye.
Councilmember Gray.
Aye.
Councilmember Clancy.
Aye.
Councilmember Trakus.
Aye.
Councilmember Harder.
Aye.
Mr. Presiding Officer, on Substitute Bill Number One for Bill Number 363, there are seven ayes.
Very well. Substitute Bill Number One for Bill Number 363 is finally passed.
Mr. Presiding Officer, I'd like to make a motion to drop Bill Number 330 on perfection.
Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Hearing none. Bill Number 3...
330.
330 is dropped.
Moving on final passage, Bill Number 364, introduced by Councilmember Clancy.
I move for final passage of Bill Number 364.
Second.
Roll call.
Councilmember Days.
Aye.
Councilmember Dunaway.
Aye.
Councilmember Fitch.
Aye.
Councilmember Gray.
Aye.
Councilmember Clancy.
Aye.
Councilmember Tracus.
Aye.
Councilmember Harder.
Aye.
Mr. Presiding Officer, on Bill 364, there are seven ayes.
Bill 364 is finally passed.
Bill number 365, introduced by Councilmember Tracus.
Move for final passage of Bill number 365.
Second.
Roll call.
Councilmember Days.
Aye.
Councilmember Dunaway.
Aye.
Councilmember Fitch.
Aye.
Councilmember Gray.
Aye.
Councilmember Clancy.
Aye.
Councilmember Tracus.
Aye.
Councilmember Harder.
Aye.
Mr. Presiding Officer, on Bill 365, there are seven ayes.
Bill number 365 is finally passed.
Bill number 366, introduced by Councilmember Tracus.
Move for final passage of Bill number 366.
Second.
Roll call.
Councilmember Days.
Aye.
Councilmember Dunaway.
Aye.
Councilmember Fitch.
Aye.
Councilmember Gray.
Aye.
Councilmember Clancy.
Aye.
Councilmember Tracus.
Aye.
Councilmember Harder.
Aye.
Mr. Presiding Officer, on Bill 366, there are seven ayes.
Bill 366 is finally passed.
Bill number 367, introduced by Councilmember Tracus.
Move for final passage of Bill number 367.
Second.
Roll call.
Councilmember Days.
Aye.
Councilmember Dunaway.
Aye.
Councilmember Fitch.
Aye.
Councilmember Gray.
Aye.
Councilmember Clancy.
Aye.
Councilmember Tracus.
Aye.
Councilmember Harder.
Aye.
Mr. Presiding Officer, on Bill 367, there are seven ayes.
Oh, I'm sorry, that's, uh, Bill number 367 is finally passed.
Bill number 369, introduced by Councilmember Tracus.
Move for final passage of Bill number 369.
Second.
Roll call.
Councilmember Days.
Aye.
Councilmember Dunaway.
Aye.
Councilmember Fitch.
Aye.
Councilmember Gray.
Aye.
Councilmember Clancy.
Aye.
Councilmember Tracus.
Aye.
Councilmember Harder.
Aye.
Mr. Presiding Officer, on Bill 369, there are seven ayes.
Bill 369 is finally passed.
Bill number 370, introduced by Councilmember Tracus.
Move for final passage of Bill number 370.
Second.
Roll call.
Councilmember Days.
Aye.
Councilmember Dunaway.
Aye.
Councilmember Fitch.
Aye.
Councilmember Gray.
Aye.
Councilmember Clancy.
Aye.
Councilmember Tracus.
Aye.
Councilmember Harder.
Aye.
Mr. Presiding Officer, on Bill 370, there are seven ayes.
Bill number 370 is finally passed.
Bill number 371, introduced by Councilmember Tracus.
Move for final passage of Bill number 371.
Second.
Roll call.
Councilmember Days.
Aye.
Councilmember Dunaway.
Aye.
Councilmember Fitch.
Aye.
Councilmember Gray.
Aye.
Councilmember Clancy.
Aye.
Councilmember Tracus.
Aye.
Councilmember Harder.
Aye.
Mr. Presiding Officer, on Bill 371, there are seven ayes.
Very well, Bill number 371 is finally passed.
Bill number 372, introduced by Councilmember Dunaway, and Councilmember Walton Gray.
I move for final passage of Bill number 372.
Second.
Roll call.
Councilmember Days.
Aye.
Councilmember Dunaway.
Aye.
Councilmember Fitch.
Aye.
Councilmember Gray.
Aye.
Councilmember Clancy.
Aye.
Councilmember Tracus.
Aye.
Councilmember Harder.
Aye.
Mr. Presiding Officer, on Bill 372, there are seven ayes.
Very well, Bill number 372 is finally passed.
Bill number 373, introduced by Councilmember Fitch.
I move for final passage of Bill number 373.
Second.
Roll call.
Councilmember Days.
Aye.
Councilmember Dunaway.
Aye.
Councilmember Fitch.
Aye.
Councilmember Clancy.
Aye.
Councilmember Tracus. I'm sorry, who did I skip? Councilmember Gray, I'm sorry.
Aye.
Thank you. Councilmember Clancy.
Aye.
Councilmember Tracus.
Aye.
Councilmember Harder.
Aye.
Mr. Presiding Officer, on Bill 373, there are seven ayes.
Bill number 373 is finally passed.
Bill number 378, introduced by Councilmember Tracus.
Move for final passage of Bill number 378.
Second.
Roll call.
Councilmember Days.
Aye.
Councilmember Dunaway.
Aye.
Councilmember Fitch.
Aye.
Councilmember Gray.
Aye.
Councilmember Clancy.
Aye.
Councilmember Tracus.
Aye.
Councilmember Harder. Mr. Presiding Officer, on Bill 378, there are seven ayes.
Bill number 378 is finally passed. Bill number 383?
On Bill number 378, because it hasn't been on the agenda for 14 days.
Okay, 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 we're gonna, we're gonna take a recess for five minutes. We're gonna re-recess. Be able to take up Bill number 378, 383, and 384 today for final passage, because, not for the first time, and more than likely not the last, this council has received inconsistent, inaccurate, and frankly, unacceptable advice from the county councillor's office. So yes, I'm calling it out, and I, for one, I'm sure with other members of any standing on this council, are beyond frustrated with the level of advice we get from that office. So with that, I believe that concludes the final passage portion of the agenda, is that right?
No, I think we moved to advance Bill number 386, and now we just need to finally pass that.
Well, let us, let us have the councillor's office opine if it's all right for us to act on that one.
I believe Bill 386 has been on the agenda for 14 days, so I believe that that is sufficient.
Yeah, speak up, by all means. Again, please.
If Bill 386 has been on the agenda for 14 days, then it can be finally passed without a unanimous vote of the council to consider for final passage. If it has not been on the agenda for 14 days, then it will require unanimous vote of the council to consider for final passage.
So before we proceed, why don't you determine whether or not it's been on the
The clerk's office will provide the information as to officially when this council introduces Mr. Presiding Officer, it has not been on the agenda for 14 days, however, during the perfection order of business, I believe that this council voted seven to nothing to advance it to final passage to take it up for consideration at this meeting. So I believe you've had that seven to nothing vote that is required.
And it's your position that the other bills, 380... 378, 383, and 384, doesn't have, doesn't meet the same criteria, right? I just, I'm just asking for yes or no.
I don't believe that that vote was taken for those bills.
Okay, the record will speak for itself on that.
Yes.
In any case, with respect to the bill at issue now, we have your blessing to proceed with it?
I believe that it's, that you've met the charter requirements, yes.
Very well. Bill number 387? Is that correct?
386.
386, I'm sorry. Move for final passage of Bill 386.
Second.
Roll call.
Councilmember Days.
Aye.
Councilmember Dunaway.
Aye.
Councilmember Fitch.
Aye.
Councilmember Gray.
Aye.
Councilmember Clancy.
Aye.
Councilmember Tracus.
Aye.
Councilmember Harder.
Aye.
Mr. Presiding Officer, on Bill 386, there are seven ayes.
Bill 386 is finally passed.
Moving on to resolutions. Mr. Presiding Officer, we have one resolution this evening. Resolution number one, introduced by Councilmember Clancy.
Please read the resolution.
Resolution number one, introduced by Councilmember Clancy. Whereas if passed, the Missouri Medicaid Expansion Initiative will require the state of Missouri to provide Medicaid for persons under the age of 65 whose income is equal to or below 138% of the official poverty line. And whereas petition backers need 172,000 ballot signatures for the ballot measure to qualify to be placed on the November 3, 2020 general election ballot. And whereas the Affordable Care Act, ACA, directed states, directed states to expand Medicaid, but a 2012 U.S. Supreme Court ruling made such expansion optional. And whereas Missouri is one of only 14 states that have rejected federal funds to cover the cost of the recommended Medicaid expansion. And whereas it is estimated that over 200,000 citizens of Missouri will benefit if Medicaid is expanded in the state, with the federal government covering 90% of the cost through the ACA. And whereas presently Missouri Health Net, Missouri's Medicaid program, provides health insurance only to children, pregnant women, those with disabilities, and some senior citizens. And whereas support for this ballot initiative is vital to help lower-income people having access to cost-effective preventative and primary health care. And now therefore be it resolved by the county council of St. Louis County, Missouri, as follows. Section 1, the county council proclaims its enthusiastic support for a ballot initiative to expand Medicaid health insurance within the state of Missouri.
I move for passage of resolution number one.
Hold the roll, please.
Councilmember Days.
Aye.
Councilmember Dunaway.
Aye.
Councilmember Fitch.
No.
Councilmember Gray.
Aye.
Councilmember Clancy.
Aye.
Councilmember Tracus.
Aye.
Councilmember Harder.
No.
Mr. Presiding Officer, on resolution one, there are five ayes and two noes.
Very well, resolution number one is adopted.
Moving on to unfinished business, item number 1/3 district.
Please hold on the order of business, so ordered.
Item number two.
Hold on the order of business, and that will be the order.
Item number three.
Hold on the order of business, and that will be the order.
Item number four.
I move that the appointment of Mr. Raul Bonasco to lead the Justice Services Department be approved as recommended.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Hearing none, the motion carries, and the appointment of Mr. Bonasco is confirmed and approved.
Item number five.
And that will be the order.
Excuse me. Item number five, all districts.
Hold on the order of business, and that will be the order.
Under new business, we have two prepared orders.
I move for the adoption of order number one, which informs that the next council meeting will be held on January 7.
Second. Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries, order number one is adopted.
And I move for the adoption of order number two.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries, order number two is adopted. Anything further, for anyone?
Yes.
Councilman Harder?
Yes, thank you, Chair. Just a couple of observations, since this is our last meeting of 2019, I thought I would take this time to give a summary of what the council was able to accomplish this past year. Many people ask the question, what does the council do? Well, in 2019, we had 48 council meetings, we passed 387 bills, we had 71 resolutions, we had 100 orders, we had 39 committees of the whole meeting, and we had 21 committee meetings throughout the year. We had ethics committee investigations, and we had average attendance among the council members up here between 92 and 96%. We listened to 789 residents who came before us at these meetings and spoke for an average of three minutes apiece. That's a total of 2,367 minutes, which equates to about 39 hours on most topics of any kind, including UFOs. We dealt with a number of common and uncommon topics, plus situations that will shape the direction of our government for many years to come. The council started the year with two new members, Councilwoman Clancy and Councilman Tim Fitch. We spent the first part of the year with the Ethics Committee, hearings concerning Northwest Crossing and other related investigations. That evolved into the eventual resignation of Steve Stanger and the elevation of Sam Page as our new county executive. We had two council seats vacated on the board, which resulted in the election of Rita Days and Kelly Dunaway. We also had our first-ever selection of a long-term presiding officer, Mr. Ernie Tracus of the council. We witnessed the drastic turnover of staff because of the resignation of Steve Stanger. The new county executive started attending our meetings and reporting on a weekly basis, which is a new thing, including our first-ever long-distance attendance by Skype from Washington, D.C., with our congresspeople. Throughout the year, we dealt with topics related to animal care and control, charter commission, city-county merger, freeholder process and picking representatives, a new port authority board, which we, which we created and moved on, county real estate assessment forums, Tower T, plan withdrawal, loop trolley, metro and by-state security, justice services reorganization, FBI investigations, resignations and hiring of county staff, cost of living pay raises, police policy issues, appointing a new police board, 2015 building code, which was passed this evening, affordable housing trust fund, which was passed this evening,